Seeing that we have a quorum, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And boom, we're gonna get started. There we go. I don't have a chairman's report. We'll discuss discuss most of the stuff I need to talk about later. That takes us into Friends of the Fiscolini Ranch. Kitty, what do you got?
Okay, so we completed the boundary survey of the ranch and there are some incursions on to the ranch. So the board is considering their options and talking to SS CCSD about that. So we also completed a report. We completely have released a report on the forest work. You know, a lot of work was done in the forest last fall and FF RP commissioned James Allen to review all the work that had been done on the forest between 2014 and 2019. And the report we found was deficient in a number of areas. It had insufficient information and it had inaccuracies. So FF RP, CCSD, and Cal Slow Fire Safety Council to comment on it. This is a fire safety council project. With our comments and all these three commenters, we have about 100 annotations on the report. So it's now available from my office through me. We're distributing it physically and you can buy a copy because unfortunately it's it has to be in color and it's a lot of pages. So it's a lot of it's like $16 to reproduce it, which I apologize for. We had greeters on the ranch on Memorial Day and on July 4th. July 4th was about a third less busy than Memorial Day and many more masks and much more people, much more social voluntary social distancing. People were very appreciative of the volunteers at both occasions. Saturday, there was a dog attack on the ranch. A dog attacked a fawn and previously injured it. It was the attack was witnessed. California Fish and Wildlife took rest came and got the fawn and took it to Pacific Wildlife Care where last I heard it was still doing okay. But one of the things that Carlos is going to tell you is that he's put permanent signs on the ranch that remind people about the county law about that dogs need to be on leash. So sadly, this is one of the things that can happen when dogs are off leash. I believe this dog belonged to a visitor and not a resident, but I'm still trying to confirm that. And I'm not sure it can be confirmed, but it was a sad example of what can happen with uncontrolled dogs on the ranch. That's my update.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Kitty?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Adolf.
A question I have is, is I remember when I was in the board that we were continually talking about dogs in the ranch. And I thought that the we finally came up with the idea that we needed to go back to the county's regulation of dogs on public spaces. And but there were some, I guess, a little bit of back and forth on it because people had been walking their dogs in the ranch for a long time. I used to walk my dogs in the ranch, but I always walked them on a leash. And I remember when I was walking them on a leash in the early days, so to speak, that there were there's a lot of wildlife around. You saw foxes, you saw coyotes, you saw deer, so forth and so on. And I noticed over the last few years, last three or four years, that that population has diminished considerably. And I think part of it is, is that people do walk their dogs off leash. There are people who cannot command and control their dogs who say they can. And so you end up with a situation where a dog gets out there and one got commanded, then it's going to chase the wildlife. So somehow I think that needs to be either a larger sign or more public information that this is a preserve. We're trying to preserve not only the environment itself, but the wildlife that is on the ranch. I'm not sure how to approach that. Maybe it's going to cause some consternation in the community, but maybe it's time to do something. That's it.
Thank you, Adolf. Anybody else? Really?
I agree with Adolf.
What's that?
I just I said, I agree with Adolf. I walk my dog out there. And I I love to be able to let her run, but I can't. There's a couple of reasons why. Foxtails, because if she gets off into the into the weeds, then it's $100 to have her paws worked on at the at the vets. And maybe in some kind of a sign that warns that, you know, it's not only bad form for people to have their dogs off leash for the wildlife, but also the health of the dog. It just beyond me that people are just like, they don't care. You know, it's like the same people that that don't wear masks in public because it infringes on their freedom. And I guess there's another thing I'm a little pissed about this morning. So.
All right, man. You got it going on. Well, let me just say this, that if we address the dogs on the leashes issue on the ranch, it's going to be a large discussion, right? Because there's going to be a number of people on both sides. So let's suspend with that conversation now. If we want to put it on the agenda for something later, Kitty, I would follow your lead on that.
I am not eager to get into that discussion. In a larger way, we've we put out signs at all. Now there are permanent signs at every entrance, every trailhead. But in March, we put out temporary signs for COVID and those signs were routinely vandalized. Sometimes just stolen, sometimes defaced. Didn't really matter as long as people were able to vent their anger. So let's hold off, Steve.
Yeah, let's just wait. But no, it's out there. Okay, thanks for that. I appreciate it. All right. That takes us to public comment. I see a number of people from the public here. Curious if anybody wants to say anything. Haley, I'll let you deal with that.
Yeah, it looks like we do have one member of the public that wishes to speak. So I will get them into the meeting.
Hi, my name's Cyrus. I go to Coast Union High School. My name's Cyrus. I go to Coast Union High School. And I wanted to talk about the skate park today because I like to skate and I've enjoyed it for many years, even when the skate park was built. I've been skating for since I moved here. So for like eight years, and I have a ton of friends who skate in the area as well. And I was wondering why we took out the skate park and when it was going to be rebuilt and how we can get it rebuilt.
Well, maybe what I'll take a stab at that. The skate park was, and thank you for the comments. The skate park was removed because it was unsafe. And the parts that were left, there was one or two items left, which didn't have good connections and actually had did have some faults as well. So the item was removed. Plans were made to kind of work on the skate park piecemeal, like so much a year at a time. And then the thought of hypothetically replacing it because we could not find a constituent for the skate park. You're the first person, the second person we've had that's come up and said, you're interested in the skate park. We don't really have any idea of the number of people. Law, you know, actually, interest was declining because it was kind of falling into bad condition when broken items were removed. And we didn't have the money to replace it. So the money to replace it is considerable. We've did some investigations as to how much the parts were and all this, and we'd about 200,000 and some. I think Carlos, did you come up with a figure on that ever was estimated around 200,000 or more?
I think the estimate that we received from one of the local skaters that did some research on a concrete skate park was about $300,000 for a concrete skate park.
Yeah. So that that was the reason we never proceeded with the skate park was because it takes a while for money. We have conflicting views of if we need a skate park again, because how many people use it versus a multipurpose court, which would be cheaper and easier to possibly maintain and possibly safer. So that's, that's where we are. We have really no money to proceed. So it's, it's a conflict invite of priorities as to which is another bathroom with the park, another skate park or whatever, what, what can we, what can we apply for? So I guess the question is, how many people do you think use the skate park? Or the skate park? Yeah. And I'm talking to the person who just asked the question here. Where did he go?
There he is.
There it is. Okay. And that's, I have Shara Tatum. How do you pronounce your name?
Shara Tatum? That's my mom.
Okay.
I'd like you to spell your name, please.
C Y R U S T A T H A M.
Thank you very much.
So.
All right.
I can.
Go ahead.
I can actually list quite a few names of people that skate that I hang out with, probably on a weekly basis in town in Morro Bay in Cayucus. I have a lot of friends who like to skate and want the skate park rebuilt. Eli, Dane, and Kayden, I skate with them probably every day, just in town. And I also skate with some of my friends, Ian Anders, and some other kids in Morro Bay that like to skate with me as well. And I have my brother named Chase and some of his friends who they're more into surfing, but they do love to skate and they skate with me too, when they're hanging out with me. So it doesn't seem like there's that many skaters, but that's most likely because there's not a skate park. And.
Well, how many do you think there are skaters that skateboarders that would attend a park if something was built? 100? 50?
The local community, my age, probably around 10 skaters my age in like freshman, sophomore, eighth grade. And then just the whole community, maybe like 30 skaters, 40 skaters in the whole community, possibly more.
Cyrus?
Cyrus?
Yes.
This is Stan Cooper. My question for you is, do you understand what we said about the fact that in order to rebuild it safely, it would cost about a third of a million dollars? And that our committee, our commission gets about $20,000 a year? It's, it's a, there's a money issue. That's a very real thing. And you guys, the skater guys, is there any way that you could, you know, energize the community to come up with that money? Because I don't know how to do that.
I think.
Go ahead.
I think there is a great possibility that we could start a fundraiser. And I think we could raise a lot of money for the skate park through the community and possibly in the county even would like to donate. And I think that if a concrete skate park costs too much for you guys, then we can have a skate park that isn't concreted. It can be wood transitions. But I know that a lot of the skaters would also like to come up with the design if that's the case.
Can I interject? This is Shara talking. Am I able to speak for Cyrus a little bit?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I've been wanting Cyrus to take a little bit of initiative. You know, he is 15, learning how to do this. And he has got quite a bit of people involved. And we're trying to look forward, you know, over the next few weeks of how to get support. Just to initiate, I don't think the Tatum family has not quite known how to proceed forward in figuring out how to fund it, who to talk to, how do we get support, what do we do? In fact, Cyrus and a couple of his friends have been to the CCSD office in the last year at least six or seven times. And actually, we went prior to the skate park being taken down because the Tatum family was willing to actually go down there and do maintenance and rebuilding if necessary to make it safe. But we didn't understand or have the right people to move forward in getting that done. All that to say, now we're looking at it. And there are quite a few people that have, you know, kind of rallied a number of families wanting to know how do we move forward? How do we show you guys we're interested? How do we raise the funds? We have a few people who have done skate parks in the past. And like Cyrus said, a concrete one obviously is going to be a little more expensive. Are there other options that aren't going to be $300,000? I think that's a real possibility. You know, I'm not quite sure to find out about the liability for the CCSD. I don't know those things, but I'm willing to help Cyrus and his friends spearhead that and find that information and see if that is how to get your guys' favor, how to get the CCSD's favor, and how to move forward. I want to teach him and his friends how to participate with adults in our community and how to get things done that would be for the benefit and good of the community. All the kids that he's talking about, they're all local kids, all work in the restaurants, all work at the businesses here. This is your up and coming youth that we want to support in our town of Cambria so that we have viable businesses. I'm a business owner. You know, I have a number of the high school kids working for me. So I feel like it's really, really important that we support the youth and give them a community that integrates them. So I guess we're just kind of here to plead our support and ask for your support and how do we move forward if that's even a possibility to spend our energies.
Sure. Thank you, Cyrus. Thank you for coming. I've got some statements to make in regards to that. I can help that along. I see that it looks like Buddy's in wants to be in the mix. Hold on, Jim. Let's, can we, let's hear from the rest of the public comment. Is that what I see? Paul there too?
Yeah. So the next member of the public that wishes to speak is Michael Campo.
There you go.
Michael, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, hello?
We can hear you.
All right. Sorry. That's the first time I've done Zoom. I'm trying to remain calm. I get a little fired up on this stuff. This is clearly political. We don't need a $300,000 skate park, although that would be awesome. Sure, the kids would love it. The whole community got together and built this thing, from what I understood. And it was to be maintained by the CCSD. The dog park got built. It gets maintained. All the trails, they get maintained. It's super clear to all of us that this skate park, somebody doesn't want it there. It was neglected big time by the CCSD. There was no love put into it by them. It was always used by the youth. I don't know what you guys expect. Like, we don't have very many kids in town. It's not like we're going to have 100 kids that are skating every day. But it was consistently used. We have over 1,000 signatures. It's one of the things, the very few things I've seen on Cambria occurrence that has just overwhelmingly one sided positive support. Everybody thinks the kids should have it. I am just, I'm, I'm upset because you've got all these parks for adults that get like, they're maintained perfectly. And the one for the kids is just let to rot. It doesn't need to be $300,000. It wouldn't have been that much money to repair some wood down there. And there's a whole bunch of contractors in town that would have been on board. But they manipulated us. They said, yeah, we're gonna tear it down and we're gonna rebuild it. And then they never did. And it's just not right for the kids in our community. I've said it multiple times. I'm not like even, I'm not much of a skater. Or like I speeded a little bit through my life. But the reason why I got on this is because it's clearly a spit in the face to the youth and it needs to be rebuilt. There doesn't need to be another soccer field when there's 18 soccer fields in town. Like, the kids used it. They've always used it and they've loved it. And there's pictures online of like, the place being just overcrowded. They had skating events there. I mean, how much more support do you guys need before you say, oh, I guess the community is involved and is behind it? We've got like 1,100 signatures, I think. What, what else is needed? It's, it's just, it's bogus. It's, it's totally bogus. I went and talked to Carlos about this and I've done work with Carlos forever. And I was trying to be nice, like, hey, let's, you know, what's going on with this? This is ridiculous. Like, our kids don't have anything in this town. Like, I don't want to get political. Why don't we just get this thing going? He got real nasty with me, said, oh, you want to threaten me? It's been like a year. I haven't got one offer for a bid for tree work for him since. I'm sick of his politics. I'm, he's not in touch with the community. He takes care of everything else for the adults perfectly. He doesn't want that there. He thinks the kids are hoodlums. I just, he said that to me before with the skate park thing. Personally, across the street from the skate park, bitching about them throwing trash and called them hoodlums. And I'm sorry, but you guys are gonna play dirty. All, you know, that's the truth. And I'm not the only one have heard these things from him. It's sick. Town has a little bit.
Hey Buddy, we're drifting a little bit, buddy.
We're gonna. That's the truth. And you guys don't want to hear it because it's, it's corrupt. Why, why aren't they getting shown love? Those, those trails are perfect. The dog park's perfect. The skate park looks like some inner city trash thing that nobody takes care of. Chain link fence? Like, what the heck?
Buddy, I appreciate your comments. We're gonna move on to Paul. I'm hopefully gonna be able to assuage some of that anger here with my comments in a minute. Let's hear from Paul.
I'll go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good morning, guys. Tough act to follow. I, I just want to, want to share my support for skating and, and for anything that's for the youth in the community. And I, I can agree with some, you know, I actually volunteer on the, the ranch sometimes with Fiscolini. So I can see that there's actually, and I know Steve and maybe a few more here are probably very active in that. So I know that there's people that are interested in volunteering in the community and we may be able to get some support from that aspect of things. Something, something that I just want to share from my youth, that I'm no longer young, so I'm just sharing this, is that I grew up in an era where skateboarding was considered a crime. And, and it turned into, it was kind of a gateway into your first bad interaction with law enforcement, if that makes any sense. And, and so I guess, I guess what I'm saying is looking at what's, what, what's being presented to the youth right now. I do see no skateboarding signs in town, which is totally the rights of, of, you know, property owners and the rest of that to keep themselves protected. But, but I guess maybe a question to ask ourselves is what, what are the options for these, you know, if it's 40 kids, I don't know how many it is. But what are the options for them? And maybe there's a way that we can make a multi-use park where wood ramps can get rolled in to facilitate when, when it's not being used for, say, arena soccer, whatever. That's, that's just my, my two cents there.
Thank you, Paul. Can you repeat your last name, please?
Yeah, my last name is Nugent. N-U-G-E-N-T.
Thank you very much.
All right. Does anybody else have anything to say before I try to close this out? All right. Listen, I think for the skate park people, you're in a good position in this regards. Nobody is really against the skate park. Even if you think Carlos maybe, he would be the one that's most against it because he has to maintain it. But I know that the CCSD board and most of the pros commission is for stuff. They're not against a skate park. If kids want a skate park, we're happy to have a skate park. The reason that their grownups get everything is because they got all the money. The reason that there's a smash ball court is because they showed up to the government, the government, which is lame and can't get anything done. But when you show up to the government with the money and say, hey, we want to do this, you get stuff done. Old people have money. They buy stuff that they want, like trails, dog parks, and smash ball courts. Kids don't get anything because they got no money. So it's the government's responsibility to kind of assist them. I'm with that. The skate park's not there now, but it's not that people don't want it there. We just need to have something there that's feasible and safe. Literally, I believe the CCSD board is on board with something. This pros commission board is on board with something. But we've got to find the money. We've got to find direction. We've got to do all that. It's good now that you people are coming forward saying, hey, we want to do this. There was a disconnect. We had lost touch with that group of people. Somebody has got to come forward. And I'm hearing Shara and I'm hearing Buddy saying, all right, we'll do it. There's got to be a committee because you cannot get money to do something unless there's a committee. Because the committee's got to make a plan and the plan's got to move forward. It's all right there. The East Ranch is there too. I'm a fan of the East Ranch. I don't know where that fits in. Problem right now is a couple of things. We're in the middle of COVID, so we've got troubles with meetings. We're going to have trouble with funding because there's going to be a lot of draw on funding that was out there for things in regard to COVID. But that still does not put us at a dead end. Because I hear Shara saying she wants the kids involved in this process. I can help you with the process, but I don't want to lead the process. I don't want to be the skate park guy. It's got to be the parents and it's got to be the kids. I will conduct a pros meeting, a little seminar, a little get together where we'll have a skate park meeting and we can have a discussion and we can try, we, not me, you can try to form a group and connect that to some of the other fundraising options in town, like the Cambria Community Council, right? The community council's not giving, give you money for a skate park unless there's a skate park group that's a viable group with leaders and with an idea, with a plan. So we got to go down that road. I hate to tell you, it's a long drawn out process. But if we don't get started now, it'll even be longer. So Shara, after you get done with this, call me and let's get together. Let's try to set up a meeting and we'll move forward with this. Does that make sense? Is anybody against that? Seeing none? Shara, I'll wait for your phone call.
Steve, I have a little comment.
Go ahead, Adolf.
I was doing a little bit of research in how skate parks are built. And I came across how they did the slow state park. It was actually, that's a large park. It's like a couple of million dollars. But the way they did it was because they're a entity that's able to raise taxes and stuff. They have something called park development fees, I guess, that are put on the public. They had a grant from someone called Harry Tony Hawk, I guess, apparently gave him a grant. And then they did the general fund portion was made possible by what they call major Y there, which is the half cent sales tax. So they have a number of different ways where they were able to raise money since we're Cambria, we're not a city, et cetera. We don't have those same resources available to us. Maybe that's what this community had researched.
I would agree. Go ahead, Joyce.
Adolf, that was from San Luis or Morro Bay?
That was a San Luis. And Morro Bay, I think, is somewhat similar because I think Morro Bay is also a city. And then say, the half cent sales tax or whatever they pass is enabling them to raise funds.
Yeah, my reference was more into trying to find money in the grant world and from charities. More so than, you know, because even to Shara and Buddy and everybody else, if you're gonna, if we're gonna build a skate park and we're gonna take $100,000 out of CCSD coffers, that's going to be a tough sell to the community. That might be, that might be, there might be some pushback to that. There is no pushback, I don't think, to the location. Yeah, some people don't want the skate park there, but that's, that's a small element. They just didn't, it was just the unsafety of the park that made it go away. So putting some of these things there, I don't think is a problem. Stan?
Yeah, I think what, you know, when you were talking about, what's her name? Cheryl or Sherry?
Shara.
Who was talking? Shara. Creating a, a working committee that has some kind of bylaws and some charter. Creating a working committee that has some kind of bylaws and some charter is, I think, is a step that needs to be done. I'll tell you that my son Miles was involved in a, he actually created a fundraiser on GoFundMe to save a business that was a little business, a little micro-business that was being swept away by the COVID lockdown in San Francisco. And because of community interests and broader interests, he was able to raise a hundred and three thousand dollars in eight days. But the money had to go to a specific place. You had to create that up in such a way as, you know, if if the skate park people want to do that and started a GoFundMe and give it a length of time and really promote it, it's entirely possible they could raise a lot of money, you know, from skate park, skater enthusiasts and parents. They could. And it wouldn't have to come out of, wouldn't necessarily have to come out of the scant resources that we have in the community.
Anybody else?
That was a great idea, Stan.
It worked in Miles's case.
Yeah, it would take some work.
Yeah, it would. And it would take the work from them to create it and promote it.
Yeah.
And that's, I think, what you were talking about is, this is a perfect opportunity to get these kids involved in the governance process and creating something for themselves that is, that they value. And then it won't get screwed up. It won't be messed with because they own it.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
Yes, I have a question. Buddy Campo mentioned a thousand signatures they had on a petition somewhere. We've never seen this. Where would we get this list of people who have signed up for a thousand people who have signed up for a skate park? If it exists, can we just get a copy of, see if it actually exists, and who's on there?
Haley, you want to let Buddy talk?
I think Buddy left.
Well, I think they should know that we, in fact, did try and survey people and tried to find out if there was interest, and we didn't see any. So this thousand signatures is very recent. That's great. If it's, yeah. I can't be a bigger supporter of a skate park than anybody on this board, but it's just new news to me.
Buddy, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't see how this is new news. I mean, like, this has been on Cambria occurrence a million times. It's on change.org. You go to Google, go to change.org, and Cambria Skate Park, it climbs every day. I don't understand, I don't get it. Like, this is new, this is not new news. It's been going on for like a year. Everybody's talking about it.
We reached out to high schools and the kids in the middle school and told them to come to one of our meetings, and we got zero response.
We went to the meetings.
Okay, hey, let's move forward. Let's not talk about the past and why we're here. We're here now. Let's move forward. Shara, what do you got?
Thank you, Kermit, for that question, and we appreciate all the support. I did talk, Harry Farmer gave me a call this morning. I had sent an email, and he thanked me for the email. We had not known, actually, about the high school or middle school. Somewhere, my kids did not hear about any of that. But moving forward, Fridays from two to three, we will be at the skate park, a group of kids. We will have a copy of that petition, Kermit. So if you'd like to come and see that, I'm happy to get you a copy of that, the petition, if you would like to see that. So we will be there Fridays from two to three. We're already starting a fundraiser. I will talk with Steve more about getting a committee and how to do that. Those are the unknowns to me. But again, I'm happy, the Tatham family is happy to head that up and get other people involved. Steve, I'm looking forward to your direction in that. But Fridays from two to three, for right now, the group of kids and parents who are interested will be in front of the skate park with a table with information, asking for help from people, and how can they help? So that's what we're starting today, trying to get that information from you guys in the CCSD, how to move forward. So we appreciate all of your input.
Perfect. I'll be there on Friday to talk with everybody.
I'll be there, I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Eric?
Okay, anybody else? That's a long public comment. That's the best meeting we've had in years.
If they could send us the petition, can they mail it to us so we can actually have a copy of it?
Yeah, right, an electronic copy, right? We don't need a physical copy.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or if they have it there on Friday, I'm happy to see.
I'll take a picture of it and convert it to a PDF and make sure everybody gets it.
All right.
But that's the only thing that's going on.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Moving on, facilities and resource. Carlos, what do you got?
Yeah, nice to hear from you guys this morning. Just got a couple of things to update the commission on. As Kitty mentioned, you know, want to give a big thanks to the FFRP volunteers that have been out there Memorial Day and Fourth of July weekends, greeting folks on the Bluff Trail, just being a presence out there, reminding them of the social distance guidelines that we have out there. It went very well, and again, just thank you to the coordination that Kitty and the volunteers did. In preparation for that Fourth of July weekend, we ended up re-mowing several of the fire breaks on the Fiscalini Ranch just to keep the public safe. We ended up re-mowing the Huntington, Windsor, and a portion of the Warren Fire Breaks. There's another beautiful bench being installed on the ranch by our volunteers. The bench was built by Will Scroggins, donated by Dal Vineyards a while back to the friends of the Fiscalini Ranch. And we're coordinating between the volunteers and CCSD on installing that out on the ranch. It'll be in the Forest Trail, Trenton Trail, probably by the end of this week is what the estimate is for that new bench to be out there. As Kitty mentioned also, we have new signs installed on the ranch. Beautiful interpretive signs were installed on several of the trails. They provide information on the trail system, habitat, and rules as well. We wanted to declutter those entrances as well with all the, you know, laminated papers and just different signs all over the place. So it's all been placed in one section for everybody to see. We're still working on CCSD lots, re-abating those for fire this year. That's still ongoing. We're hoping that we'll be done by re-abatement deadline, which is the middle of this month. Also wanted to just let you know and give a big thanks to Harvey's Honey Hut and Mission Country Disposal. Reached out to them, you know, early March, mid-March, asking them for help to provide some services for the homeless on Cambria Drive, Highway One. They were gracious enough to Harvey's to put a porta potty out there and a hand-washing station, and Mission Country put a dumpster out there. They've been servicing those, providing free cleaning of that service for the homeless there since mid-March. So a big thank you to them, and I've spoken to the homeless there. They're grateful for it. They've been using it. So it's a big kudos to them.
Carlos, can I just ask you a question about that? What are the numbers of homeless out there using that? And are they in the, using it from the parking area, or are they using it from surrounding camps in the area? Any idea?
So the services are located at the Fiscalini Ranch on what is called the Steelhead Park. You know, you could see it across from the light there. The people that are using it are the ones that are on the Caltrans right-of-way on the right-hand side. Estimated, you know, last time I got a call from the sheriff, he said the camps there were growing. We're probably looking at about fifteen or twenty homeless folks there using the services there. Like I said, they're grateful for them. They use them on a regular basis. Especially, I think they're grateful about the trash bin there. It's always hard for them to, you know, dispose of garbage, so they're definitely very thankful for it. Also wanted to update you on the Bike Share Program. Not sure if you remember last year, but the Chamber of Commerce approached the CCSD about installing some bikes at the area between the skate park and the library. And these were supposed to be bikes that people would share. There's several stations across town. There's another one at the Bluebird. Well, recently, the contract for Saks ended, and I reached out to the Chamber and said, hey, the contract's expired. You know, we need some new insurance. And then we got a reply from the Chamber that they're, as they were reaching out to the company, they realized that the company had gone out of business during COVID. So the bike station there has been removed at the skate park. The Chamber's still working and trying to figure out what they're gonna do with the rest of the bike stations across town. Who's gonna take the bikes away? So anyways, that's sort of sad news, you know, in regards to that bike station there. Also wanted to let you know that I received a follow-up email by the county on the beautification grant that we submitted a while back. And they actually asked further questions about the grant that Pro's put in for, you know, twenty thousand dollars for the restroom on the East Ranch. So that's still in progress. Looks like they at least are taking a hard look at that proposal. I haven't gotten a reply yet on whether it was accepted or not, but at least it's still in the works. That's all I've got, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Carlos? Dan?
Just wanted to comment on the Zagster. As of yesterday, an investor purchased the assets of the Zagster Bikes. And there are some people in town that want to buy them. So if you can hold off, you know, don't move them or anything, if you can hold off a couple of weeks, there might be a rejuvenization of that particular program.
Yeah, so we actually have the bike station here at our yard, and we've communicated to the Chamber that whenever they're ready, whenever they have somebody that can pick it up, it's here for them.
Okay, just the rack or the bikes?
So we just have the station. The bikes were actually moved to the other stations that had empty spots in them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Carlos?
Yeah, I have one. You say the beautification grant contacted you to give more information?
Yeah, the county contacted me via email, just asking for further follow-up questions on the grant, just a little more explanation on what we were asking for.
Oh, okay.
That was what I received from them.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none. Thank you, Carlos. That takes us to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion? Adolf says he likes the minutes. Stan, seconds out. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes passed. All right, on to the discussion of the tiny way access. Do we have any, we have nothing new on that, anybody? That takes you basically to John or Carlos.
Yeah, I don't think we have any update. I think we were looking for some guidance from the fire chief. I know that Haley reached out to the fire chief. And our utilities manager just letting them know about the meeting to see if they had any input on it. I don't see him at the meeting today, so there's no further update on that.
There is a meeting scheduled, though?
No, Haley invited him to the Pro's meeting, to today's Pro's meeting to talk about it.
Oh, the fire chief?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Has he had any discussion with the landowner?
I haven't spoken to the fire chief about that in particular, so, you know, I can follow up with him and see if he's got any updates on that.
Okay. All right, not much discussion on that. Okay, any other future agenda items?
I think we should have the skate park as a future agenda item.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
I would also suggest we look at all three priorities. This is a good chance to balance. I think we had three of them, which was the the future toilet at the East Ranch, the possible skate park, the possible multipurpose court, and see if there is a priority. That's it. Go ahead.
Stan?
Yeah, I'm encouraged by the heat that I felt the skate community put on us today. With exception of Campos being accusatory. I think that it's kind of imperative that we give that group of people, those kids, those parents, an opportunity to develop something. And maybe, maybe we want a toilet, and maybe, you know, maybe we want, you know, a multipurpose thing. But, you know, the squeaky wheel is, and if these guys want to raise the temperature of the discussion and really get into fundraising and it invites these young people to have a passion in building something for themselves. Everything is right about that, and we need to promote it if we possibly can. And that doesn't mean that we don't do a bathroom and, you know, we don't have, you know, we've got to give these people a chance to vent and possibly change our view.
Well said. Joyce?
Okay, one more thing here.
I would like to second that. I think that's really beholds us to pay attention to the young people. And I thought the youngster who's fifteen spoke very admirably. I mean, he was concise and knew exactly what he wanted to say, and he said it well.
Okay, I would like to add, oh, go ahead.
Dan, go ahead.
I just want to add real quick that, yes, we should have the constituents that would benefit from the small soccer field there too. So just to, you know, there's a constituents there that we thought might be the best use of that old skate park. They should be involved along with the skaters so that we balance the two.
Yes, I don't want to create a competition between the two groups because I think we can appease both of them.
Okay. Okay.
I don't think it has to be one or the other. I'd like to at least think that we could maybe accomplish both things. And if not with the multi-purpose thing, we could at least get a soccer field on the actual ranch itself.
Oh, I'm all for that, yeah.
So, yeah. Go ahead, Kermit.
I've got a question about your grant application. Any news on that? And the other question is, obviously, matching funds would be very usable for a grant application if we could find anything out there floating around for any purpose of those three priorities.
That was the, Carlos commented on our grant. That was the one that he hasn't heard back on yet.
Okay, but is there anything, how do we catch these grant possibilities that float by once in a while? And I'm talking probably to Haley and John here. They would hear more of possibilities probably than we would, since there isn't sort of the government male circus.
Kitty too, I assume, has her ear to the ground on that.
I can give you some guidance on that. So as far as, one thing that I didn't mention is, you know, our board just approved the 2020-2021 budget. In that budget, we, the board approved some funds for Pro's. Seventeen thousand dollars for discretionary use, whether it's for Seventeen thousand dollars for discretionary use, whether it's for the skate park design or the restroom design or whatever pros wishes to, you know, put that money towards. There's another three thousand dollars set aside for grant writing. And so we can go out and look for a grant writer that can do some research, that can write some grants, that can go out there and, and get some money towards some of these projects that we're looking at. Obviously, as Steve has mentioned, it's gonna be hard to come buy money, you know, especially nowadays. But you know, if we have somebody that has the expertise, that has the know-how where these grants are, I think it's, it's valuable. And there is some money to do that. So it's a matter of, of looking for that person. I have reached out to somebody in the past that has written grants for the CSD and she might be available to at least give us an estimate on, on her hourly rates and, you know, what she can do for us. I'll reach out to her and see if I can get some information from, from her and bring that to you at the next pros meeting. I'm happy to work with Steve as well and with the folks that are looking at the skate park. As you know, I've been, you know, I've been taking care of that skate park for a while. Before or during the time that it was closed, we were looking at repairs and we were looking at, you know, how it was bad, badly in shape. I had reached out to the county to see what permits we would need to transform the skate park into a concrete skate park. I had reached out to several, you know, cities about their skate parks, who they use, the designers, how they got their money, who helped them, you know, build it. So we have all those contacts. So we have a framework of what it's gonna require for the skate park to be rebuilt concrete wise. And like I said, I'm happy to have that, those conversations with Steve and whoever the committee is or, or the parents and kids that, that are interested in it.
Anybody else? Adolf?
Yeah, one comment. Can we get a spokesperson for the skate park to attend our next meeting? With whatever comments they can accumulate from, I guess both sides.
That's my objective. I'm gonna work on that.
Okay, good.
And I'll show up at the, at the thing at between two and three on Friday and listen. And try to make, try to make sense of positive comments. I, I don't wanna go there and be yelled at, but I don't, you know. Cause I was, I was at the, the original meetings before any of that stuff got built. When Lady Tidy and, you know, remember the old, the youth?
Youth Center.
The youth center. Yeah, I mean, I'm all for kids having a place to skate. And so that's, that's how I'll approach it. And I think that they need to, as a group, they need to come up with some inventive ways of raising a significant amount of money that can be for match grants and things like that. Cause if they do that, then there's probably going to be organizations or, or that, that would pitch in money based on the fact that they already had a vested.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Anyway.
I, I also, I'll try to attend the Friday meeting, but I guess the other question that we have, we've always explored redoing that court. The same court and that, the problem with the court is it actually is a pretty intensive area that takes, you know, it takes a little bit of money to make it all fit together on that small of space to, so that it's not, it's safe and it's well-designed. But is there another place that's got a, you know, a slope like a sidewalk somewhere which could be partially widened and made into a more of a terrain-driven with jumps and so forth and rails on the edge of the sidewalk or an area separated from the sidewalk so we don't have pedestrian entanglements somewhere else in this town? Is there a better, is there a place we could incorporate the skate park into a different piece of terrain other than that court? I guess that's really my question. And I think that, that might be a cheaper way to go as well as a little more exciting than the square court. Court. That, just a thought. And we, I'll, I'll talk that, I'll, that's a question we could ask Friday.
Yes. All right, anybody else?
Nope. I gotta go. I got a conflict.
Right on. Awesome. I'm gonna, Adolf, go ahead. Make it quick.
Just one other comment. I did look at a lot of these little parks and there are some really nice snuggle parks. And they look like they would fit perfectly on a kind of slab that we have. And they really, I think maybe the group who is going to be there, the group that's gonna be there Friday, actually they had to come up with a couple of ideas for us. Show us what they want. Would like to have.
All right, I'm gonna throw this out there. I'd like them to build a skate park on that spot at the end of Bridge Street by the post office. Can you put me a little skate park there?
Yeah. Yeah, man.
I'm for that. I'll raise you money for that one. All right, I'll see you guys on Friday. Thanks for the, thanks for the meeting.
See you guys.